Well, at being 6:30, I will call this meeting of the Ashland ZBA to order with a roll call vote. Charlie Bazelo.
Is here.
Martine Badger.
Here.
David Toth here. As we begin the meeting, I want to ask the applicant, Daniel Lucetti, do you wish to proceed with three or four, with a three or four member board?
We will proceed as is three or four. We are fine with whatever you guys have right now.
Okay, well, we do have four members here. So I will appoint Alan Silly, who is an alternate to the board as a voting member of the board for this meeting. Because this is a Zoom meeting, for right to, right to no purposes, due to the current COVID-19 pandemic, the governor issued an emergency order, number 12, that waves the location requirement of public officials at a public meeting. This meeting will be conducted electronically through our Zoom connection as listed on our agenda posting. The meeting is being recorded, correct, Martine?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Okay.
And I am, I'm in the process of letting a few other people in here.
Okay.
Yeah.
And will be available through PBTV YouTube link on the town's website. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes from October 8, 2020. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, K.I.?
Uh, should you?
I have to do a roll call, I guess.
Should do a roll call vote, yeah.
Charlie, Charlie Bazelo?
Says yes.
Martine Badger?
Yes.
Dave Toth, yes?
And Alan?
Right.
Alan Silly? Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Alan. Tonight, we're going to be having a public hearing, but since this is a Zoom meeting and since people are just joining us, I want to take care of some housekeeping so that we can keep the meeting as orderly as, as possible. Those people who have just logged into the meeting, if you could tell, give your name to Martine Badger so that we can put you on the list to speak.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I have someone labeled Donna's iPad. If I could get a, if I could find out who that is? Donna's iPad? Okay, I have.
The epicenter of the US pandemic, putting a curfew in place, bars, restaurants, and gyms.
Could somebody please?
Starting tomorrow, gatherings in private homes will be limited to 10 people.
Okay. Okay, just a moment here. I, phone number 8803510. Could you tell us who you are?
Yes, I'm Paul Kilgren. I'm with Southern New Hampshire Services for the Ashland Elvily Housing.
Okay, can you spell your last name, please?
It's K.I.L.L.G.R.E.N.
Kilgren, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. And Donna's iPad. Could you identify yourself, please?
Donna Flanders, Oldhamness, New Hampshire.
Donna Flanders. Could I ask you, do you have a radio or TV on in the background?
Yes.
Okay, that, could you turn that off? Okay. Thank you very much. And will you?
Sorry.
That's all right. Thank you. What, will you be speaking tonight either for or against the application?
No.
Okay. I think I've caught up with everyone, David.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to call the public, public hearing to order right now. This is a public hearing on Ashland zoning board of adjustment case 2020-01, which is now in session. We will be considering the application by Center State Acquisitions LLC to place a gravel pit slash quarry at the end of West Street, tax map four, block two, lot two, in a residential, in a rural residential zone. Just that, because we have a number of people joining us, just to give them some background for this, the rural, rural residential zone provides for low to medium density living, open space, protection of environmentally sensitive areas such as wetlands and floodplains, porcelain, and steep slopes. And it allows the following use of single and two-family dwellings, multifamily dwellings with no more than six units per structure, cluster residential development, a mobile home on an individual lot, agricultural, forestry and farming uses, and certain home occupations. Our zoning regulations in Ashland allow the ZBA to grant special accepted, exceptions for other uses for, for land in rural residentially zoned areas under certain conditions. And I think this is, this is, this is really important because the zoning board's decision is limited and focuses specifically on these criteria. And these are the things that, these are the criteria we will need to evaluate to either grant or disapprove this special exception. Marty, do you have that list of?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Marty's just going to put this up.
Just a moment here. Let's see. And special exception criteria, correct?
Yes.
Okay. There we go.
The specific site is, is an appropriate location for the intended use or structure. The use will be compatible with neighboring land uses. The property values in the zone and in the surrounding area will not be reduced by such a use. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. The proposed use will comply with the minimum lot sizes, frontage and setback requirements set forth in section 2.3 of the zoning ordinance. And existing road and highways are capable of carrying the additional traffic. And I would ask and encourage those people who are speaking either in favor or in opposition to the project to focus your discussion as best you can on, on any of these, one of these or more of these criteria as you make your case. Thank you, Martine. Before we go forward, I think it's important to ask people to be respectful to the board and to other presenters during, during the hearing. I do not want to be rude, but in a Zoom meeting, we have the ability to mute your mic in case you, in case you get carried away. I hope that won't be, I hope that won't be necessary. And if that occurs, I don't mean it as a, as a personal affront to you, just as, just as a matter of propriety. Our procedure tonight will be as follows. First, we will hear from the applicant, who is represented by Daniel Lucetti. Then we will hear from any, any people supporting the project. I do not believe we have anybody here right now for that. And then we will hear from those who are in opposition to the project. We also will entertain rebuttals from the applicant, as well as those who are opposed to the project. ZBA members may ask questions of the parties involved. I simply ask that you ask permission of the chair before doing that. When the speakers have finished, the ZBA will then determine how we will proceed at that point. So let us, let us begin by hearing the case by the applicant, Mr. Lucetti.
One more, Mr. Lucetti, do you want me to put up the plot plan?
Yeah, I think that would be beneficial.
I will do that. Okay.
Thank you. And you did get the updated one?
Yes, yes, I do have that. Yes. I can enlarge areas as we need.
Sure. So I'm Daniel Lucetti. I'm with HUB Engineers out of North Conway, representing Center State Acquisitions and Brandon Hiltz for the proposed gravel pit quarry use on tax map four, block two, lot two in New Hampshire, located at the end of West Street. The property is approximately 85 acres in size. And obviously, as mentioned, located in the rural residential zoning district, as well as a portion of the property is within the municipal wellhead protection area and an aquifer. As mentioned, the applicant is looking to develop a gravel pit and quarry more or less centered in the subject property, utilizing West Street for access. A road would be constructed or driveway from the end of West Street to the quarry gravel pit area. The property was known to be historically used gravel pit during the construction of Interstate 93. As you can somewhat see in the bottom left corner of the screen, there's rounded contours.
Hello?
The mound says that show signs of excavation for a borrow pit or quarry for materials. 93.
They're trying to build a quarry right behind our property.
There are butters to the north, which are conservation land. Butters to the east consist of residential land. To the south.
All right.
And which is a commercial district with commercial, commercial uses. And then to the west is Interstate 93. The current condition of the site is a vacant lot, fully wooded, undeveloped. More or less no development, directly old woods road on the property, but currently not being used for anything. The proposed excavation is approximately 11 and a half acres in size. No real design or permitting of the excavation has been completed yet. As we're still in the early phase of the project, seeking approval for this use on this property. This is showing the desired, more or less, end product of the applicant, but has not been fully designed, has not been permitted, has not been reviewed by DES or the planning board for approval. They would be looking to excavate the existing hill, more or less, obviously centered in the property, stockpiles, storage areas for gravel, crushed stone, any type of aggregate product that would be sold at a quarry or pit. As I mentioned, nothing has been designed or permitted yet, but all the design and permitting activity, the design would have to adhere to the state's excavation regulations, as well as the town's excavation regulations and NHDS alteration of train regulations, which more or less cover the environmental aspect of it as far as runoff, pollution, dust control, things of that nature. And if you'd like, I can read through our justifications for the special exception criteria, or would you prefer to open it up to questions, comments now, or?
I, I think, I think, Daniel, it would be helpful if you, if you did that. Could you explain to, before you do that, can you explain to people who may not be familiar with the term what a burrow pit is?
Sure. So burrow pit is more or less an area nearby construction that's going on, that has suitable soils to be used, whether it be sand or gravels, or some cases ledge and stone, depending what the intended use is, but basically just a simplified quarry or excavation.
And this, and, and just to be clear, this, this land was used for that purpose during the construction of I-93?
That is the understanding, yes. There been no, we couldn't track down any documents or permits for it. But that is my understanding of how the property was used historically.
Okay. If you could go through your justifications now?
Sure. So number one, the first requirement is the site, this specific site is appropriate location for the intended use or structure. The subject parcel is a vacant wooded parcel that was previously used as a borrow pit during construction of 93. Evidence of the excavation is present in topography on the northern portion of the site, which Martine was highlighting earlier. And the subject parcel has a small portion of land that is actually in the commercial district and directly abuts the commercial district, where obviously there are current commercial uses in place. And the proposed excavation area is centrally located on the property in attempts to mitigate any disturbances from abutting properties. As I mentioned, setbacks will obviously come into play and be pertinent to the excavation where they can excavate, where they can't. And that's.
Well, listen to this. This is that.
More or less.
No.
I'm listening.
Number two, the use will be compatible with neighboring land uses. The neighboring land uses consist of commercial uses on West Street to the south, Interstate 93 to the west, conservation land to the north, and residential land to the east. These abutting parcels include, sorry. These abutting parcels include the residential uses already, residential uses that already abut the existing commercial uses in the commercial zoning district on West Street. And the proposed commercial excavation would be an addition, additional commercial use of abutting these residential properties, make it compatible with the abutting uses. There will be no, no, no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Adequate internal roads will be provided for safe vehicular traffic, as well as pedestrian safety. Not very many roads would be anticipated as be one way in, one way out to a stockpile area and then back to West Street. Pedestrian traffic obviously will be very limited on this use. It will just consist of large trucks, not very frequently visiting the site, but that's the main traffic generation here. As mentioned, vehicular traffic generated by the proposed use is consistent with the use of vehicles already, already utilizing West Street. The proposed excavation vehicular traffic will consist of the current use. The applicant's trucks actually utilize West Street daily to fuel up at the Irving on the corner. Although it's closer to the intersection than this property is, they're still utilizing the roadway. The paved width of West Street is approximately 20 feet, 25 feet wide. And ASHTO, which is an engineering guideline for roadway design, recommends a 12-foot lane width for large commercial vehicles traveling opposite directions. So with this, we have sufficient road width and space based on their guidelines to provide a safe road for commercial trucks. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. As mentioned, the proposed excavation will be required to meet at a minimum, New Hampshire RSA 155-E Local Regulation Excavations, which outlines the proper operations and use. And it will need to adhere to any planning board or planning board regulations that they have as well. We have not crossed that bridge yet, but we would adhere to them as well. The proposed use will comply with minimum lot size, frontage and setback requirements. There's no proposed subdivision or any boundary line adjustments on this property. So we will be meeting minimum lot size, frontage and setback requirements. The seventh justification is existing road and highways are capable of carrying the additional traffic. There's anticipated minimal additional traffic with this anticipated, anticipated use. The applicant's vehicles utilize West Street daily to begin with and would have a few additional trips per day on this road to the subject property. West Street already supports large commercial vehicles for the lumberyard, fast food, hotel, residential housing complex. And there's a self-storage facility on West Street as well. And as previously mentioned, the West Street is approximately 25 feet in width, whereas ASHTO guidelines for highways recommend 12 feet in width for large commercial vehicles traveling opposite directions. So there's sufficient width for this traffic on West Street.
Thank you. Thank you, Daniel. Do any of the ZBA members have questions for Daniel on any of those items?
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions.
Go ahead, Charlie.
All right. Can, Mr. Lucetti, can you describe the actual process that will be conducted and give some sense of the, the volume of it? How many vehicles or trucks a day, week? What, what's going to happen there in terms of the extraction process? Could you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. So the structure, the mining process, if you'd call it, it'd be a blend of just excavation with machinery. And depending on what the soil condition is, potentially some blasting of ledge. Those are all things that we don't know yet because we haven't got that far into design. But it would be a mix of excavation with excavators and blasting, potentially, if needed.
The. What, what is the product that you wish to, to create?
It would be various aggregate products from sand to road gravels to riprap, woe. Any sort of earth material that could be sold that's generated from the property would be for sale for this, at this property.
Will there be any finishing activities such as washing of aggregates? Crushing of stone?
There would be crushing activities likely. Washing is a potential as well. It hasn't been determined if that is a desired product that the applicant wants to sell. But crushing would be anticipated for the larger aggregate that needs to be crushed down into gravel for road material, road bases, things of that nature.
And what kind of volume do you project in your business plan? I mean, how much of this, how, how much do you have to sell to make this viable?
I don't know that answer. I don't believe it's been calculated yet. I could refer to our client on that and provide further information at a later date. But I don't know the financial breakdown of this project.
Yeah, just a kind of a sense of, you know, how, how many trucks a day, week, or month, or you're going to be traveling down West Street and you know, just what, what are they going to be carrying? Or how heavy are the loads? That, that type of thing would be helpful.
Right. Those, the loads would be obviously in requirement with whatever load is needed for the roads they need to travel on and whatever West Street is. So that would be, they'd be forced to abide by the law, obviously, on loading for the roads. Number of trips per day, I would say varies. I'd say an additional probably between five to 20 trips a day, depending on where the trucks are hauling to. Obviously, the proximity to the pit, to the job site would depend, so unknown at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Charlie.
Anyone else? I have, I have several questions I'd like to ask. Obviously, the land has, has been used for something like this purpose in the past. Have you done any further studies to determine how much sand or how much ledge is, is up there and if this, if the land is really going to be appropriate for your intended use?
That exploration hasn't been done yet. It's an expense that the applicant isn't willing to take yet at this point, given that there's no design. We don't even have approval for the operation on this property yet. But I believe borings would be complete to determine what material is to figure out what can be produced with it.
In, in terms of property values, you say the property values will not be negatively affected. Do you have any expert testimony for that?
We do not. We could consult with an appraiser if desired to complete a study.
Okay. Just, just to make something clear, I think you've already made this clear that the rural residential zone here does abut the commercial, a commercial zone, and you've already discussed the fact that there are a number of businesses along, along West Street, including the Irving Station, Ashland Lumber, Hotel, the, the storage facility, Burger King, et cetera. I just want to make it clear to people that those businesses are not in the rural residential zone. The, the proposed gravel pit, however, will be, or would be in the rural residential zone. Just so, just so that everyone under, understands that. In, in terms of, in terms of the traffic, right now, the traffic, the traffic exists mostly, or the traffic with heavy trucks exists mostly at the southern end of West Street. And I'm assuming it's either to go to Ashland Lumber or go to the Irving Station. Very little of that traffic of heavy vehicles actually goes up west. Very little of that traffic of heavy vehicles actually goes up West Street. Is that correct?
Yes, that's my understanding of it as well.
Okay. Thank you. Mardine, is there anything else you wish to say, Daniel?
That's it. I'm, there are questions now.
Okay. Mardine, did anyone else join us?
I do have one more person to admit right now.
Okay.
It is, let's see, Regina Buto. And I believe. Okay. Regina Buto, I believe. Regina, are you connected with Common Man Commons?
Yes, I'm just listening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That is the only other person that has joined us. David, I do have a couple of questions.
Oh, go ahead, Mardine.
Okay. How, what would you be constructing in regards to a road to access that excavation area that you propose? How would you, how would you be getting there?
It would probably be a 24 to 30-foot wide gravel road that more or less parallels 93 on the western side of the property. Trying to hug the western slope, more or less, obviously, as you can see from the plan, it's more or less a mountain or a massive hill, the property right now. So the most direct route would be to kind of side hill along the western property line. Some excavation would be needed to construct the road. That would, that's the conceptual intent of the driveway to the property or road.
Okay, okay. How wide did you say it would be?
I'd say between 24 and 30 feet, probably.
Okay, okay.
So enough for two trucks to pass?
Yes.
Okay. And let's see. That's all I have right at the moment. I don't know, does Alan have any questions?
Alan?
Yes, I'm here. I think the only question I have, which we just talked about, is the access road that is running parallel to 93. How deep will that cut be into the side hill?
Unknown at this point. We haven't got into the design of it yet. I don't know what it would be, but the slopes, whatever they would end up being, would be stabilized with either vegetation or a riprap material, something that prevents erosion in downhill areas or washouts.
Okay, I'm, I'm very familiar with that area. I believe that it would be probably a substantial cut in depth, probably 25 to 30 feet. But that's just my opinion.
Wouldn't disagree looking at it on the plan now, but I can't say for certain what it would be. We haven't gotten that far yet.
Any other questions from the board?
Not, not right at the moment for me.
Were there, I'm assuming that, that there is no one else to speak in favor of the project. Is that correct?
I do not believe so.
In that case, I believe we have three people. We have three or four people.
We have Ryan Clusier and Paul Kilgren, both from Southern New Hampshire Services. And Susan Slack here is, is here from LRPC. She may have some comments. I don't know which direction, but she may have some general comments. Those are the only ones that I know of at the moment.
Okay, well, LRPC was, was consulted about regional impact. So maybe we could begin by hearing from Susan Slack.
Good evening, everybody. Lake Region Planning Commission was notified that the ZBA deemed this application to be one that has potential regional impact. And as you may know, there's a state law that, that lists six factors that could affect whether development may have regional impact. And I think there are at least two of those six factors that are particularly raised by this application. One would be transportation networks and the other would be proximity to aquifers and surface waters. So for transportation networks, the intersection of West Street and Route 3, depending on how much large traffic there is, there could be some impact there at that intersection. And also would note that closely adjacent to that intersection is the northbound entrance ramp on I-93. So, you know, some idea of what the traffic impacts might be there would be important to us. The other, obviously, then is the proximity to aquifers. So I think having some idea of where the groundwater resource is in relation to the excavation would be important. And just note that, you know, the town's wellhead protection area is nearby. And I believe that that is a water resource for both Ashland and Bridgewater. Is that right?
Yes, it is. I can show that diagram. Let's see. This is the one. Okay.
Yep.
Let me enlarge it a little bit. Okay. This is the, right here is the piece of property that we are talking about that I've just outlined. This red area is our wellhead protection area that comes across. Up here, this slight, this lightly shaded blue area is part of the aquifer that extends across into Bridgewater, across, across the river and probably extends further up the river also. This is, I believe, the second largest aquifer in the state.
Yeah. So noting those as being regionally important, you know, they provide, the aquifer provides, you know, drinking water resource to private wells, the private property, as well as the, the town's wellhead protection area. Those are important regional natural resources. And, you know, it's not LRPC's position to, to take a position for or against a particular application, but to point out what some of the regional implications could be. And I would note that both in the alteration of terrain permit process as well as the planning board's process under RSA 155E and site plan regulations and your own local excavation regulations, that the practices used and their impact on the, on the aquifer would come into play. And so there are best practices that DES may require. There may be depth of excavation limits, those types of things. So, you know, the ZBA has to determine, you're in a difficult position because you have to determine if this is an appropriate location for this use, but you're only deciding whether the use is permitted or not. If you decide it's permitted, then those other, the planning board and DES will determine how that use can be conducted. And so knowing where those natural resources are is really important in how the use would be conducted.
Mardine?
Yes.
Can we make a, put the pointer on about where we think the actual gravel pit is going to be?
It would be, I believe, approximately in this area.
Okay. Daniel, as far as you know, will the gravel pit cross the, the aquifer line or the wellhead protection area?
I, I don't know for sure yet, but the location shown on the plan was more or less selected to be outside of the wellhead protection area and groundwater protection area. So the intent of it was to be outside those areas. I haven't, we haven't developed a plan that overlays this map with our site plan. So I can't say for sure, but if the attempt was to locate it outside of both those boundaries.
One question I, one question I have is as you're conducting your operations in that area, what measures would you use to prevent any fuel or any hazardous substance or regulated substance from leaking into the ground and, and impacting either the aquifer or the wellhead protection area?
There would be an inspection and maintenance manual that would come along as a requirement for the DES alteration in train permit, which outlines confirming vehicles and equipment are not leaking contaminants into the ground. If they're, it's, this is just saying things out loud. I don't believe there's intended to be any fuel storage on the site, but if there were to be, that would need to be permitted via DES as well. So they would have regulations to enforce and make sure that there is no pollution of groundwater from hazardous materials, fuel, that nature. For stormwater, I would say the alteration train permit would require drainage measures to ensure that there's not any increase in runoff off-site onto the abutting properties that would cause damage there. So the drainage aspect would be managed through AOT as well.
What about the, if, if I may?
Yes.
No, go ahead, Susan.
What about the washing of stone? And where, where would that drain? How would that drain and how would that be monitored? And, and what are the best practices for that operation?
That would be contained within, it would probably be a large detention pond that would be used to recycle the water, really. So the intent of that is that the water that's being used to wash the stone, if that is a desire to use on the property, would obviously be using the equipment, wash the stone, and then flow into this detention pond where the sediments can fall out and remain on the property. And then that water would be continuously used for the washing of aggregates as a source, really, instead of having to drill a well or go other places. So the pond would be a multifunctional measure on the property.
Just as a point of interest, the town's well is just on the other side of 93 and probably approximately in this area. This is about, this is where the town wells are for the water supply for the whole town. It's right in this, right in this area.
One thing that I might note, since I was the Water and Sewer Commissioner, and so was Alan at one point, is that the aquifer itself consists of a lot of sand and and stones. And we have an existing problem with salt coming off of, off of I-93 after, after it's, after the road has been salted and plowed. Some of our testing has shown that, that there is almost an immediate increase in the sodium chloride content of the water right after, right after, right, right after sand or right after, right after salting the roads, which sort of indicates that, sort of indicates how, how porous that land actually is. And, and so it's really much more delicate, I think, than, than, than people, than people realize. So that's something I think we, we also have to keep in mind as, as we look at this project.
I think it's also interesting, important to note that the site being considered for excavation is probably up at, up at a level probably of the northbound side of 93. The southbound side of 93 is a little bit lower. The well of the town is a little bit lower than that, and the river is lower than that. So from the excavation site, it all pretty much slopes down towards the river.
Right. And the aquifer itself is V-shaped. So it's probably as, probably right where the well is, is probably in the area where it's, it's deepest. Just to give people an idea of what, what that might look like. Susan, do you have any, anything else to add?
Just one question. The access road into the, into the excavation site, does that go through the wellhead protection area?
Believe it would.
Let's get back to that.
And so that would, that would be, would that be a dirt road and a paved road?
Most likely a gravel road.
Yep.
The boundary of the property is, starts about here and goes all up this way. So part of the boundary is a property, part of that road, yes, this first part, a probably good share of the length of that road would be going through the wellhead protection area in order to get to this area here. As you said, the road, Mr. Luchetti, would, would, would hug this boundary of the property, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and then go up into here.
Looking at this plan, I would say that it would cross through the boundary.
Yes.
And would that be enough land disturbance that that's part of the alteration of terrain review?
Yes, any improvements, disturbances for this project would be reviewed by DES in the alteration. Yes.
Yep.
Speaking of 93, one, obviously, one of the abutters is the state of New Hampshire Interstate 93. So they were also notified. We did receive a letter from Michael Kimball, who is an accessing utilities technician with DOT. He is not here tonight, but I would like to read their brief letter into the proceedings of the meeting. This is This is, dear board members, the New Hampshire Department of Transportation provides the following testimony in response to the above request. The New Hampshire Department of Transportation remains neutral toward the request to construct a gravel pit slash quarry on land owned by Center State LLC for Brandon Hiltz Construction, Inc., provided that the property have no increase in water runoff flowing into the department's right-of-way, provided there is no alteration or construction within the department's right-of-way and provided that if necessary, any driveway permits and/or excavation permits are obtained from the department. Additionally, the New Hampshire Department of Transportation requires that any excavation for the gravel pit or quarry is at the appropriate setback distance from the wire right-of-way fence and all slopes must be constructed so that the grade tips away from the interstate and all state of New Hampshire-owned land. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Michael S. Kimball, Accessing Utilities Technician with New Hampshire DOT. And we'll provide a copy of this letter with the, with the minutes.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
I'd like to now hear from Ryan and Paul. Do, such you're both speaking for the same, same facility? You want to speak together or do you want to speak separately?
I think I can just speak on behalf of both of us if that's in lieu of time and such. I think I can do that.
That would be fine.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you, Chair and Committee for allowing us to be here. I'm simply just going to read the testimony, written testimony that I plan to submit. Basically, my name's Ryan Cluthier. I'm the Vice Chairman of Southern Hampshire Services Management Corporation. And I'm writing to this letter to voice Southern Hampshire Services' sincere opposition to the application for a special exception as proposed by Center State LLC. SNHS is the owner of the Common Man Commons, a 28-unit income-eligible elderly housing complex located at 48 West Street in Ashland, New Hampshire. The Common Man Commons is a direct abutter to the proposed site. When SNHS recognized the need to provide affordable housing to elderly citizens in the town of Ashland, we were excited to find the location of 48 West Street, knowing it was a rural area that allowed us to provide a quiet, enjoyable lifestyle to a minimum of 28 Ashland residents, residents who have supported their community for decades and will continue to support that into the future. Ashland is a peaceful rural community with many properties spread throughout the forested mountain hills and valleys. It's a place where residents can escape the noise and business of the city and relax in tranquility of the town they've called home. When SNHS started construction in 2006, we made a significant investment in maintaining the peaceful rural lifestyle in which we wanted Ashland's elderly residents to continue to enjoy. A gravel pit slash quarry right in the heart of the community would be devastating and ruin the quality of life that we and our tenants enjoy so much. I respectfully ask you to hear the concerns and take into careful consideration the enormous negative impact such an operation would have on the community and in the environment in which we live. Our first concern is traffic and public safety. There's only one access in and out of this location, which is West Street. The roads are narrow with very little room on the shoulder. Many of our elderly residents utilize this road to walk and get their daily exercise. Increasing traffic on this street, especially with large trucks with limited visibility, will only increase the risk to those elderly walking and driving around their home. With the addition of ledge blasting and product being extracted, it would mean multiple dump or large trucks per day traveling down these same roads, causing congestion, pollution, wear and tear on the roads, and a greater potential, potential for accidents. Many of our residents open windows and spend much of their time outside enjoying the fresh air. Multiple trips a day of tandem axle gravel trucks rumbling by with dust and debris would be a nuisance to the quiet, enjoyable lifestyle we're trying to maintain. Our second concern is noise, dust, and pollution. Ashland is unique in its topography with many mountains and valleys. The proposed gravel pit slash quarry is located directly next to the Common Man Commons. The noise, dust, and pollution created by this proposal would adversely affect the entire community as wind travels through these valleys of Ashland every day. As it is, SNHS had to construct the roof of our building utilizing high-wind shingles based on these strong winds that come through this area almost daily. One can only imagine what the decibel level and increased debris will be if gravel pit is allowed to operate in such close proximity to our residential property. Our third concern is environmental. The applicant proposes to excavate ledge within this pit that we believe there's a substantial amount of ledge within this area, including where our site is. The unintended consequences of blasting and ongoing vibration in this area would impact our residents substantially. Water always follows the path of least resistance and any single, multiple, or successive development and/or site alteration could have an irreversible negative impact on community wells and important wetlands, not to mention the impact to the structural integrity of nearby buildings. In closing, I would like to say that the comments listed above are only a few of the concerns that SNHS has related to the proposed gravel pit slash quarry. As comments are made tonight, I'm sure we will walk away with more questions and concerns, but the overarching issue is the fact that we will be taking a residential area in a quiet, peaceful community and making it a commercial area to the point of making it potentially unlivable. This decision is one that could destroy the lifestyle for multiple elderly Ashland residents who have devoted their lives to making Ashland a great community. As we age, things naturally become more difficult. However, having a quiet, enjoyable lifestyle in the community we support and love should not be one of those difficulties, especially when we can control the outcome. SNHS has worked extremely hard to ensure we found the best possible rural residential zone we could for Ashland residents, and we respectfully ask the zoning board to consider this when making their decision. I thank you for taking the time to hear our concerns and hope you will take them into consideration while making your decision about the future in our community. Thank you very much.
No, thank you, Ryan. Mardine, do you have the address for Ryan to, or the email address for Ryan?
Yes, yes. I would, you could do it one of two ways. You could email it to the zoning board and that ad, that email address is landusezba, all run together. Or you could mail it to the Ashland Town Office care of ZBA. And that address is Post Office Box 517 in Ashland.
Okay, thank you very much. I will, I'll submit it electronically for you tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
At this time, I wanted to ask Daniel if, if he has any rebuttal.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I would say they're all valid points, definitely in respect to dust, noise, nuisance, all of those items that you have listed. The intent is really to shelter the, the nuisance on the other side of the excavation. So the intent isn't to have the excavation and extraction and crushing process directly abutting any property. The intent is to try and shelter it, to limit the dust and noise pollution. Obviously, there's requirements, as I mentioned, from DES in that process that control and restrict how and how the operation needs to proceed. For dust, for more or less all the reasons listed, previously mentioned, the water runoff, drainage, wind, all of those things are things that would be considered and reviewed by DES in the permitting process. And answer any other questions.
Thank you. Ryan, do you have anything further to add?
Not at this time, no. I think just the key word there in the rebuttal being intent in the fear that we have in that. So thank you.
Okay.
David, I do have two more people. I think Fran, I believe, is Fran Taylor. Is that correct? And I believe she had some questions. Fran, if you can hear me, could you unmute yourself and then we can hear you? Fran Taylor? Okay, she did. Pull up the questions. Some of her questions, she had texted some questions here too. Some of the questions that Fran Taylor had were, where are the steep slopes? And will this be obvious to Route 93? And she was concerned about how would the dust be dealt with in relation to the nearby commercial areas?
Am I good to go?
Yes, go ahead.
Once again, as mentioned, the steep slopes, the intent is to locate them centrally in the property. That's not a permitted design. Nothing has been approved by the state. Nothing has been fully designed yet, but more or less centrally located. Would they be visible from Route 93 or obvious from Route 93? I can't say for sure because the elevations haven't been determined of where the cuts would be. There would be a buffer, obviously, as mentioned, that would remain intact with DOT's wire fence line as well as the property's own setbacks. That would remain in a wooded state. There wouldn't be a full clear cutting of the property. Those buffers would remain intact. Dust, as I previously mentioned, would be something that's covered in DES's alteration to terrain permit, specifically in the inspection and maintenance manual portion of it, which more or less governs how the operation needs to function.
Mardine, could you put the map up again?
Yes. I think that's a good idea.
Try to, try to show Fran where the steepest terrain is on.
Yes. Just a minute, I need to move this for a minute. There we go. Okay. If you, Dan, if you can explain where the steepest areas are and I can try to point them out as you describe them.
Sure.
Just to orient, first of all, just to orient everybody, here is West Street coming up and here is the beginning point of the property.
The slopes on the property, I'd say the steepest existing slopes are really in this southwest corner closer towards West Street. So the dashed lines that you can see on the plan are contour lines. And obviously, the closer they are together, the steeper and more intense the slope is.
So this, okay, would be.
Correct. Yep. Obviously, there's some steeper slopes on the northern part of the property as well, which are existing. And then in the middle of the screen where there are continuous lines, that is where the proposed excavation would be.
Okay, in this area.
Preliminary, that location, as I mentioned, nothing has been fully designed yet or permitted.
So in relation to the Common Man Commons, which is here, and then the storage area that is here, and there are a few, a couple small businesses and/or residences along here. So this is a very steep area here, correct? And is this a somewhat steep area here?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'd like, just to point out that where we're proposing is we would still be leaving, if you can see the oval-shaped contours kind of in between the proposed excavation and the existing slopes, no, further to the.
Further here, okay.
So that's, that's the peak of, I guess we could call it a mountain. For this sake, so we wouldn't be proposing to completely knock down an entire mountain and level the property. That would be there as a buffer and screening area. So all the operations would be at a lower elevation that have that natural excavation wall and landscape on the top of the mountain to screen and buffer from the other uses.
So it loo, it looks like that mountain is about 800, almost 900 feet there. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, and that, and the property is really at about 600, 650?
So this, you can see the, the 570 contour further down to the left.
Yeah, right here.
Some very schematic grading of what the intent is. So of the crushing and operations and stockpiling would be down at that 570 elevation.
Okay.
And the property climbs all the way up to 830 feet. So several hundred feet of vertical buffer from where the bulk of the operation is happening.
Okay.
So, and, and I mean, Fran asked a question about visibility from 93, but I think there are some, there's, I think we should discuss visibility in, in general and this is not going to be visible from West Street. Is that correct?
Correct. From West Street, there's the access road and driveway in obviously would be visible. But the excavation itself would be shielded by the existing terrain.
Okay. What about the visibility of the road and the project from 93?
Okay, so here's, just again, just to orient people, here's your property boundary line. And this is 93 here. Okay.
So do we think the road is going to be visible from 93?
I would say that the road has potential to be visible from Route 93, yes.
Okay.
Just on the topography and where it would need to go. As I had mentioned last meeting, and I apologize for not providing definitive answers, but none of the design has been completed yet, so I can't say certainty, but my gut instinct is that there'd be some visibility of the driveway from Route 93.
And will the excavation itself be visible from 93?
Going to refer back to the same question and comment of that. It very well could be, but there hasn't been any confirmation of elevation to where the excavation limits would be to say for certain, but definitely a possibility.
Okay, now up above this, up, up behind this to the east, is it? Up in there? That's where the, that's where the, that's where Witten Woods is.
This is Witten, this is Witten Woods, this property here.
This, oh, this property is Witten Woods on the, on the north side.
Yes, on the north side. And, okay, this, this direction is north.
Right, okay.
Okay, this is, this is the north. Witten Woods is here. This large piece of property here is owned by the Gliddons.
Okay. Is the excavation going to be visible from either of those properties?
It, it very well could be, yes. Given the setbacks it adhered to, the local setbacks of where work can and can't be completed, without knowing the full topography of Witten Woods and the abutting properties and what the visual sight lines are and what the proposed excavation is, I cannot say for sure, sure.
Okay, I do have this map. This is the upper pointed part of the property that you are considering. The excavation area is down a little bit further this way. This all is Witten Woods here. And these lines are the trails. And there are a couple viewpoints that are marked on this map. There's one here, there's one there. So this is Witten Woods. This is owned by New Hampshire, New England Forest Refoundation. Squam Lake Conservation Society has the conservation easement here and Squam Lake Association manages the trails. The other piece The other piece of conservation property, the Glidden property is privately owned by the Glidden family, but it is also under a conservation easement with Squam Lake Conservation Society. And again, if this, if we could continue the map down here, the excavation area is approximately here.
Yeah, I would... It's possible that you could see it from the south peak, because that's over 1,000 feet there. I doubt whether you could see it from the north side on this trail, having hiked up in there. And I don't know what these black lines are.
There are different trails.
Yeah, well, but the Witten Woods, these are the Witten Woods trails here.
Yes, the black lines are unmaintained.
Yeah, they're unmade, and they may be logging roads.
Yeah, yeah. But the blue and the red and the green are marked trails.
Yeah, if there's any visibility, it would be from, from south, south peak.
Right here.
Yeah. I'd have to go up there again and see if you could look down towards this way. I think the view from there actually goes towards the lake, but...
Okay.
Anyway, okay.
Bring it back up.
Are there any other question, or is there anybody else that logged in, Mardine?
Yes, just a minute here. I did have, I have a first name of Gunner. I don't know who could, can Gunner hear us? Let me see if I can. Okay, I don't have any sound. Gunner, can you hear us? He's trying to connect to audio.
Okay.
That is the only other person who has joined us.
Okay.
I'll watch. As soon as, as soon as I see an audio connection there, I'll let people know. I do have, in the meantime, I've got one question. Has the applicant, have you done any or accessed any traffic studies yet for that? For West Street in the intersection with Route 3 and 25, and then onto 93? Okay, okay, nothing yet. Okay, because I, that is, and Susan Slack made reference to it, it is a very busy intersection. It's not, there are several driveways and roadways coming very close together there. A lot of traffic in and out of West Street all year long. So I think maybe, might look into some sort of a traffic study, some, some data for that, for that area.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mardine. That is a surprisingly busy little intersection, and it actually can get tied up in there even during, even with the use we have now, especially in the summertime.
Yeah. Because we, we had, we had submitted a proposal to add a sidewalk up West Street, which we were not able to get, but we did look at some traffic figures for that West Street and Route 3 intersection. And, and then to the 93, and they were very high. Very high. And that, and we were hoping to put a sidewalk up that street because we do have, as I think was referred to earlier, we do have a lot of people walking along there. And among all that traffic, so it is a concern.
So Gunner hasn't been able to...
No, I do not have... There's no video, no, no video connection and no audio connection yet for Gunner. He may be able to hear us, I'm not sure. Again, maybe I can just repeat for anyone who might be listening. If anyone does want to submit any written testimony, they can email it, as I mentioned earlier, to landusezba@ashland.nh.gov. And that, that will come directly to the zoning board.
Excellent, Mardine. If there are no other questions, at this time, I think the, the board needs to figure out how it wants to proceed at this time. I am going to propose that we continue the hearing to our next meeting at December 10. The reason, or one reason I would like to do that is that, you know, we've been conducting a Zoom meeting. I've been trying to take notes myself during, trying to conduct the meeting and take notes. And one of my responsibilities as the chair is to summarize all the facts in the case, which I am not able to do at the moment. It could possibly take me some time to pull that together, and I'd prefer to see a draft of the minutes along with, along with my notes, so I can put together a decent summary. And that would also give people who, who might have had trouble, like Gunner, logging into the meeting, a chance to submit their questions and concerns, which we could take up at, at the continuation of the meeting next time.
I would agree with that. We do have, obviously, Southern New Hampshire Services read their, their testimony. It would be helpful to be able to read that once we get it in the email. There are problems, I expected one other organization to be here to submit testimony. I do still expect that they will. And that would give us a chance to review, as you said, David, as you said, the minutes, review the video, review the, any written testimony that we get. So I would support that, too.
I would entertain a motion to that effect.
I will make a motion to continue the hearing to the next zba meeting, which is on December 10. It would be at 6:30, and we would be conducting it via Zoom. And as soon as this meeting is over, we will get the Zoom information out. So that's, that's my motion.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Any, any other comments from Charlie or Alan?
I have none.
I won't oppose it. I mean, in my mind, I think I've heard a complete public meeting, but I don't have any reason to oppose extending the, the meeting further.
Alan?
I have no objection.
Okay, all those in favor? Mardine Badger?
Yes.
Charlie Bizello?
Yes.
Alan Silly?
Yes.
Dave Toth?
Yes.
Okay, so the hearing will be continued on December 10. And if there are no other comments, I will adjourn the meeting.